Public project stands. When you. Then you visual. Liberty Justice.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to. Euclid Township Planning Commission Meeting, April third, two thousand twenty four. This meeting is being recorded in Zoom. There will be no questions taken online, only in person. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is welcome our two new members, Laura and Dan. Welcome to our planning commission.
Thank you.
And then I also would like to thank Richard Jordan for his years of service. Uh, Richard was on the commission for quite a few years. And he's taken a time off and we're moving on. So with that, as everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the January third, two thousand twenty four meeting. And if they have, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve that.
I have a motion from Lindsay. Do I have a second?
All second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on. First on our list tonight is Cavalry Chapel, two seventeen Downland Forge Road Sketch Plan Discussion.
Well, that's helpful. So, good evening. I'm Ari Christakis from Buckley, Brian and Westchester. I represent Cavalry Chapel. With me here tonight are Andy Davis, uh, who has been appointed by the church as sort of a designated representative to discuss this project. Andy, uh, has a site work construction business, so he's very familiar with the civil issues that we're going to talk about tonight. Uh, although, although, excuse me, also with us is Stephen Dorr, the assistant pastor at the church to answer any questions you have about operational issues, services, things like that. For the two new members of the planning commission, you, you won't remember, but, um, the rest of the planning commissions might recall that last year we were here discussing rezoning of two parcels. So the church, uh, in two thousand twenty three purchased two residential parcels that you can see here. The lines are zed out. On the plan, they purchased these two parcels with the purpose, with the express intention of expanding their parking, basically. Last year, the township, uh, agreed to rezone, uh, the remainder of the existing church parcel and those two parcels to the PC district. So everything that we're discussing tonight is the PC district. These two parcels used to be R one, they are now PC, so the entire tract is PC district. Um, which will make the planning process considerably easier than it would have been otherwise. So, uh, as I said to my client yesterday when we met, this is kind of like a trip, right? We, we're now at the point in the process where most developers would appear before you with a plan. We've taken this sort of extended pre-journey of doing the rezoning. But in one sense, we're kind of starting the process tonight because this is the first opportunity for the planning commission to give us kind of substantive feedback on the plan. And I'll just kind of briefly step you through what you're seeing on the plan. So to the south is Dowland Forge Road. Uh, Eagleview Boulevard is off plan, right? The existing church building is located here. You can see it kind of in the background. The two new parcels that have been acquired here to the west, all of these parcels would be consolidated as part of this project. It would become one parcel. All subject to the PC district, and I'll just point out, uh, because it's a little bit of a wrinkle on this project. The church has, uh, has created a voluntary restrictive covenant. That says that when, if, as and when this project's approved, the lots consolidated and final land development approval is granted. This parcel will always be used as a church. So. In the sense that the planning commission sometimes considers, well, what happens if this isn't a church in the future? That's not, it, it's a potentiality. It could happen in the future, but the township is going to kind of be in the driver's seat at that point because the restricted covenant can't be amended except with the township's approval. So whatever occurs there, it, it's something for the township to consider in the future, but not necessarily something that the planning commission has to think too carefully about at this stage. So, uh, in terms of the current proposed improvements, you can see, I'm going to use the word phase tonight just to describe different elements of the work. I want to be clear that the phasing, that's one of the things we want to get your comments on tonight. There could be overlap in the phasing. There could be gaps between the phases, but we're thinking of them as kind of discrete work elements. So the first one would be the parking, right? They, as you heard last year when we were here to talk about rezoning. Parking is a, a current challenge for the church. They want to make sure that they have adequate parking, uh, to both. Meet their current demand and the expanded demand that they anticipate as a result of this, this work. They want to make sure that that works properly. So, uh, to that end, traffic planning and design is conducting a traffic study now, basically as we speak. The, uh, that will also include an analysis of parking utilization, which is something that Dan mentioned in his, his review letter. Here, here's the, the bottom line on that one. The church has different sort of functional elements. There's a sanctuary at this end. There are. Education building, Sunday school, basically rooms, there are meeting rooms and so forth. Not, none of those rooms are used. It's not used all simultaneously, right? So it's not, it's not like a traditional office building where you know that the office building will probably be occupied. You know, one person, one, one parking space per four hundred square feet from nine to five during the day. It's not really that kind of use. And candidly, the township has raised this question and, and the church agrees. We want to give you data to make that decision, not kind of make guesses about when things happen and so forth. So we've engaged traffic planning and design to prepare that initial study. The planning commission will get to review that and give feedback based on, on that, those findings. The plan that we have tonight, because that work is ongoing, uh, at the township's recommendation, we think is a great idea. We're here tonight to get kind of a sketch plan review because oftentimes I, I do this all the time. I come in with an application and it seems like it's set in stone already because we filed the application and we're defending things that might not be the best design idea. When the planning commission, usually you guys do this all the time. You have good ideas, so we'd like to get some of them and incorporate them into the plan now rather than later. So what will result procedurally from this, um, is after the sketch plan, uh, review is done tonight. We will prepare this into an application for conditional use proceedings. It's a little bit weird because we've already got a conditional use approval for this project. So one of the things that I'll be working with the township solicitor on is, i- is this an amendment? Is, are we superseding the prior, uh, conditional use decision? It, it really doesn't matter from our perspective because this is a pretty substantial change to the configuration of the, of the parcel. So, and we want to make sure that the parking's adequate at the back end. So we're, we're interested in kind of having a, a fulsome review of the entire project and, and we're not thinking of this as sort of, well, we're just adding a little bit of one to the building. Also, I should point out that that initial, that the most recent conditional use amendment was in two thousand and ten. So it, it's rather old. Things may have changed, traffic patterns and so forth since then. I think one of the things that you'll hear and we talked about last year when we were talking about rezoning is that the, the church's own pattern of utilization of parking has changed. As, you know, families grow up, there are more cars per family coming to the church on a Sunday than perhaps there used to be. So that's something that will probably be identified in the traffic planning and design report that they produce. So. Phase one would be the parking expansion that you see here. That would add another hundred and thirty seven parking spaces. And I believe we have eighty six additional reserved parking spaces in this area. At this corner of the parking area, we've, uh, identified an area for a future maintenance building. Dan correctly pointed out in his review letter that that building is too large to be within the rear yard setback. So we're going to relocate that building. Uh, we have some ideas about where it could go tonight, but that's one of the things we'd like your feedback on is where you think that is best suited, uh, on the site. The, uh, so that's phase one would be this parking area with reserve parking. We would keep that as green space as long as possible. Obviously, if the, if the, uh, parking analysis indicates that we need that parking right away, we would pave it. But if it can be avoided and we can maintain it as green space, we prefer to do that. Drive aisles here, this driveway from Dowland Forge Road, um, would be, uh, it, we, we've shown it here. It's in the vicinity of the existing driveway. Uh, obviously Dan's review letter suggested maybe aligning it with the, uh, the park to the south. We think that's a sensible idea. We have concerns about the site distances uphill towards Dowland Mill, uh, towards Eagleview Boulevard. Looking left, it, it's a little difficult to see from the topo lines on the plan, but this, uh, sort of edge of the, the, the parking lot is elevated relative to the road. And looking left, I was just there yesterday, looking left up the street is a little bit of a challenge. It, it's something that could be addressed, but that's something we'll want to look at very carefully as we go forward because you don't want to put the driveway in a place where it's dangerous for someone to pull out. Obviously, you know, uh, the, the movements at that intersection are to be determined. That's, we're, we're going to get a recommendation from traffic planning and design on that as well. So, um, you know, the movement might be affected as well by relocating it further towards Eagleview Boulevard. So, uh. That's phase one. Phase two would be this rear expansion on the east side of the building. This is space that is intended for additional Sunday school space. Andy and, and Steve can give you more detail on this and I'll just generally kind of summarize it. That's not, it's not really for more space. It's to make the space work better as a, as a Sunday school area. Things like restroom configurations, reconfiguring the space so that it works properly and so forth. They're still designing the architecture for that, but they're confident that this is the space that's going to be required to accommodate that, those changes to the building. Then, uh, finally, phase three would be this expansion at the front. This is an expansion to the sanctuary portion of the building. The, uh, that would take, so the prior conditional use decision from two thousand and ten. Permits the sanctuary to have seven hundred and fifty seats. This expansion would take it, and again, the architecture is still up in the air, but for a projection number, we're using one thousand two hundred and fifty. Seats, so it's an increase of five hundred seats in the sanctuary. That will also enable us to kind of reclaim some of the parking area that is existing on this side of the building and treat it as green space. To create a little bit more of a, 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 a better look, frankly, on that side of the building. So, uh, you know, obviously things like pedestrian walkways and so forth still have to be refined. But, um, but those are kind of the highlights of the plan. Couple of other items from, from Dan's letter. We understand that there will need to be buffer plantings in areas where there are driveways, right? We, we've included it here along Dowland Forge Road. This was actually a specific comment that came up from some of the neighbors during the rezoning process. They, they wanted to see more screening there. We're happy to provide that. And I'll also point out that we have included the vegetative buffer that we discussed with the township during the rezoning process. Obviously, these neighbors, uh, to the west, they are, those are residential uses and we are obliged to maintain that buffering and planting. There's a, a fair amount of plantings on the property currently. There's, there's a decent stand of trees sort of in this area. The trees that are in this sort of area, they're shown as a canopy on the plan. They're not, and obviously we'll provide pictures of all of that and so forth. They're not, it's not really a consistent canopy. It's more kind of low hanging trees that are sparse. But there is a pretty significant wooded area along the property boundary that we want to maintain as much as possible and, and sort of augment where necessary. So those are kind of the, the highlights. Uh, you know, at that point, I, I would be happy to open us up for your questions or if there are other topics that you want to explore, we're happy to do that. But we would really just like your, your thoughts and sort of your experience and gain the benefit of that for the night.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with something that's been on my mind. When you originally came in and it's, doesn't work, we know that. We talked about you can't use the parking of target and all that. And you guys didn't want to use it and technically we're not allowed to use it, but, um. I'm having issues with seeing a lot of blacktop sitting empty. So could you look into the possible of permeable parking area?
Uh, like pervious paving?
Yes, pervious paving or any kind of pervious, uh. Pavers or whatever that could be used for parking areas.
Is, we can look at that certainly. I- is the objective there to manage stormwater or to have a different look? What, what's, what's the purpose you're looking for? Okay.
Basically, the same issue, like you said, you're filling this parking lot about two hours a week. And our rest of the week, it's sitting. Pretty much ha- half empty. So it's just kind of, this is my opinion, it's just getting the look a little bit away from just good old blacktop.
Okay.
You know?
All right.
So both, both reasons.
Can I, can I inquire, Dan, what, what is the township's treatment of pervious paving? It, is there partial credit or, or anything granted at O and M agreement sort of thing, or how do you usually approach it?
Yeah, so, so one point for Dennis and the rest of the planning commission here too is pervious asphalt. From a distant view is going to look the same as regular, regular blacktop.
Okay.
Force base to allow for water to infiltrate and drain down with it. Um, so what happens with that is you'll incorporate that into the stormwater design accordingly and use that to let the water seep down into the ground. Um, and put the stone beds underneath the parking. Um, I believe it's still counted in Terra, correct or wrong, I believe it's still counted for your, um, uh, in pervious calculation. So you don't get credit from the zoning department for doing anything there. You just, it's just a different way to manage your stormwater management for this and minimize, um, the concentration of water at a point of in, inlets and stormwater facilities. Um, so that's the gist of what you get. If you're, if you want something that doesn't look like blacktop. Um, uh, and having type of grass pavers. That becomes a, a, a more difficult process to, to, to do and to manage. Um, from a, a construction point of view here, wet weather and even the grass grown, if you have that kind of papers that have grass coming up. That is a possibility to, to incorporate into the project here and to go ahead and do it to avoid the looking of a sea of asphalt. Um, so, but, uh, that I haven't seen a lot of really good ways to do that for a vehicle to park on. Um, if you add some excess parking that all you here occasionally are using for one service and you're making the one row in the backside area, you can do maybe that paper. The YMCA down in, um, in, um, in, uh, in Westchester, the, uh, one on Airport Road. They have from the, the outside parking stall areas that the concrete block paint papers, I don't know. I think it's a stone that's in between them, uh, but you can have those with grass growing, growing in, um, um, in for that, but. But something that can be looked at.
I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Consider, consider looking into it. That's all. Yeah.
Okay.
I share the same concerns as Dennis, so I, I'd like to see, um, something else if it's, like you said, and like what, excuse me, Dan was saying. I think even just grass in general, but maybe with concrete pavers in there will provide that structural integrity so it doesn't get ratted up if it's a rainy day. Or maybe you can have it flow away so it doesn't, you know, turn into a sea of, you know, water and grass.
And like Dan said, it, in some cases, it's a matter of selecting the right place to put it, right? Because there are going to be some high traffic areas where you, you wouldn't put that.
Correct.
And, and, but we can see, look for ways to maximize it. Sure.
Except I would assume you have, like, most, most, most places have, like, one really busy mass and then the other ones are less. The early morning one and the later, later afternoon one may not be as busy. So you have that nine thirty slot where all the families come. That's your peak, peak time. The, the seven thirty slot is less, the, hmm, what is it, please, it's less. So that's, I could be considering saying, hey, I'm going to do this outside row, um, here of, uh, not necessarily the drive aisle, but just those parking stalls.
Right.
As some type of alternate.
Okay, we'll look at that. Okay.
I wondered, um, because I was thinking about, I, I walk a lot along the, the sidewalk that is on the side of the, um, well, where there's a sidewalk on.
Down and Forge.
Yeah, Down Forge. Um, and so I, I was thinking about that crossway to ma- seeing if they were aligned for like a four-way. You know, um, driveway there. And so thinking about that, if, if, would we be able to open that park, parking lot? For extra spaces for them to use and like create a pedestrian crossing there on during high, like, traffic time?
It's, it's a public park. I mean, I guess ultimately here, I don't know the, the, how that people like to do it. It's on a Sunday. Would you, are you having, I think it used to be O Y A, didn't have gates on Sunday.
Saturdays definitely on Sundays.
I was going to say, there, I've gone there on Sundays with my son playing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the, the other issue is, is, is something that would need to be looked at is that mid-block crossing. And looking at the site distances and having that crossing, uh, coming, coming from there. Um, uh, putting a, putting in a crosswalk on an area in non-stop condition.
Yeah.
Making a safe provision for us would need to be looked at from the traffic agent here.
Gotcha. Okay.
I think them should be evaluated.
Okay.
When you're looking at the places, trying to align the driveway.
I would say to give the kids access to play on that playground, but like, that fills up in a matter of seconds when O Y A fills. No, correct. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Sidewalk on the church property at all. The trail sidewalk on the target park side stops right there and then, you know, it will pick up.
And that's probably too thin to add a sidewalk. He would have to put in a retaining wall or something and that's going to get costly.
It, it would, the retaining wall would almost certainly end up in the right way.
That you'd have to chop it and put a, a, a real nightmare, yeah.
But you'd be willing to think about the crosswalk lining up things?
Yeah, yeah. And, and frankly, I, you know, whether it's, uh, at, at that location, you know, sort of to the west here. Aligned, if the alignment works or sort of up in this area, uh, there, there needs to be some pedestrian communication across Downland Forge Road. Or, or else, you know, anybody who parks in the target won't be able to come across the street. And, you know, there's, I can't say that anyone actually does that to attend church service, but I will say that the Starbucks is on the south side of the street. And the church is on the north side of the street, so there's going to be somebody walking across there every once in a while. So, yeah, having, having a pedestrian way in that location, it, it will probably ultimately make sense. I just don't know the right place to put it yet. If there are other locations that you can think of, we, we've identified this area. The, the direct across the street potentiality, and then I suppose there might be an opportunity to do something in this area if you can't align the driveways at the site distances don't work. Uh, presumably the site distances would work at this location because you have more sort of flat ground in this area to see things. It, it, traffic planning and design ultimately kind of give us some feedback on where we think we, we can locate that.
Stop them knowing that that's an interest of the township. We should let them know.
Yes.
And that, that please, we value it, the best option for, for pedestrian crossing.
Okay.
And then to go one step further with that, as you do the crosswalk and come up into the parking lot, should there be a more of a pedestrian sidewalk coming across the. Yeah, from. From like where the arrow is up to the church. That is identified that that, I mean, I know people, nobody uses crosswalks half the time they cut across. But at least should be a defined area where people can walk there and people in cars should know, okay, I have to stop.
Right.
And let these people go.
Sure.
So from, uh.
Yeah. You have to do stairs up the hillside or something. You have to do stairs or I guess you would have to add in.
Yeah, well, if they came, well, they came in by the driveway and they just went across. Across the driveway with some kind of marking and then, then a sidewalk up along the, uh, cause I'm somewhere, it's something, something just to, to, you know what I'm getting.
Yeah, we, we've, actually, we started talking yesterday about ways to move pedestrians from the parking area up to the church and how, how to do that. Sort of appropriately, it, this is the same sort of thing. It just needs to tie in together, you know, to identify where the pedestrian ways are.
Drive lines.
Right.
Would they need to crossways?
They'll get hit walking through them.
Then you should drive through.
This crazy is cheap, but I, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, I was, sorry, I was just saying, because we were telling him to, to change it to grass or, or something else. So if he loses that asphalt, you're going to lose easy marking capability is all I'm saying.
So.
Take that into consideration, just to delineate.
It's very unlikely that any of the driveways would be.
Well, correct.
It is right. It, the, the parking stalls might be, the driveway is the area where we would need to.
Oh, okay.
So you're marking out, so there's a way to do it, you know, it, it's just a question of laying it out and making sure all the lines connect together in the appropriate ways.
I'd like to ask, what's the plan to handle this slope? Cause there's a, I don't know if it's six, seven, eight feet. There's a significant difference between the existing parking lot and the land where the houses are currently.
That's right. So there's, there's significant sort of slope here. That's one of the reasons why you see sort of the driveways in the locations where they are. When Howe was designing this, they looked at sort of what the, what the, that fall line would look like, right? And they figured out that doing it transverse didn't make any sense. So basically just go straight into the hill, down the hill. And grade it so that it's the appropriate grade going downhill. It, I, I know it doesn't look like it works visually, but I'm, I'm assured by the engineer that it does. So, um, so the idea is that it, you know, it steps down to one level here and it would step down again to this level here. Um, as you move down this driveway here and this driveway here.
So it steps down further. So is there fill involved to elevate the kind of middle level?
So I don't know that we've actually done a cut and fill analysis yet on it. My guess, Andy, do you have a guess on that?
Yeah, no, it will require.
Okay.
But the, the total would be the neighbors below, um. Where the each had to do different service, um, they're getting store water from the, uh, the two adjacent parcels. All our special waters collected and taken to the supermarket. And so what these are going to do is for the one neighbor, we're going to collect them all and bring it out around the shelter. But for the other neighbor, uh, he's kind of excited to see something that looks less like, you know, the houses that he's up against now. So in essence, what you'll see from the lower side, the parking lots will each terrace up.
Okay.
As they come up. And so from the low side, once those terraces are in their landscape, really they'll just be more seen. Almost like a wall, uh, you know, a wooded wall, let's say, because you're not going to see the part of like, uh, they have a slope up, parking lot, you know, slope up.
Okay.
And, and for us, we, because we have the whole front of the building, uh, it's really what we designate for, uh, the ADA or A F for. Moms and kids and whatnot, really that whole lower portion just really becomes.
Yeah.
But terracing the part, the new parking is how you're going to approach the slope primarily. Yeah, to make those distances work. Okay.
I have a question. The buffer that you have between the residential property and the lights. Will it be such that it will diffuse or reduce headlights shining over onto that property?
Yeah, in fact, they won't really, uh, see much of it, but what's there now, we're actually filling in what's there now. So in other words, because right now, you know, uh, the previous homeowners, it was a father and son, they saw the light that. Or so there's the other drivers coming in. So we're actually taking what's there and densifying. Going on top of that, then you have the terrace with the parking lots coming up. Actually help this first building here, and then we have to go, go on and add more landscape in there for them. But we're actually working with, you know, to affect a behavior very much in support of even me.
As long as you're working with the neighbor and trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what half our job is to keep everybody in the township, uh. Okay, and then you identified your probable, um, usage of the additions when they come into effect.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, for the E B Walsh letter, did you have any comments? Were you going to address all these items that, that Dan had put in here?
I can if they're, if they're.
Oh, you were going to go over it. I mean, did you have any like pushback on any of them or were you gonna comply or?
They're all will comply. Um, the, the ones that, um, that we have to explore further are the alignment of the driveway, right? We don't, we don't have, we can't say for certain that we're going to comply with that because we don't know what the site distances look like yet. So, uh, so that's, you know, a potential point of conflict, but we're not sure. And, and no, frankly, there, there's, it's a sketch plan. So, so there are a number of comments that are at conditional use, you'll have to provide this and we understand. Okay, so, so those are all will comply.
Well, one of the items was the maintenance building and you said you wanted to talk about that a little bit more.
We understand at least the move. If you have any thoughts on where that, here, if you want to use the.
What's, what's the concept of the maintenance building? Is it just like a pole barn, like a shed?
Yeah, no, yeah. So, so actually, right now, which means.
It's workshop.
It's actually not supposed to be there. House or, with this plan to go from where it was, it's just the same, uh, but. Right here is actually the existing house that's already there. So that will actually slide down over the existing. Uh, houses and either we'll find out whether or not, you know, or maybe to, or the existing house tips over the line of the setback. Just because it was built that way before the, so we'll find out whether this barn, pole barn could, say, barn, just simple. But in essence, what I think we're going to do there is that it'll be a storage box we need for, you know, maintenance, it's going to be everything. But it was likely a little more like an older Chester County barn.
Okay.
So like, as I said, we're meeting with the neighbors. Uh, they might want to see, and so we're thinking from the backside, something, uh, kind of the old stone look, something that just kind of fits in and will not. Again, what you can't see on this is. They have a beautiful pond out back here.
Yeah.
You know? So, um, so yes, we talked with that and they sort of, the house is there to go away. With it something.
Within the setback lines and all that, right? Yeah, you got to follow them.
Okay.
I, I just wondered with the, um, you were talking about the woodland, so the, uh, woodland protection standards and. It did seem to me that there were a lot of woods there, um, but you're saying, you know, if you look at it more closely, it's, it's canopy, but they're not actual trees.
So this, this area. I, I can't say for certain, uh, because I haven't done the analysis, but I, I think it probably qualifies as woodland area. This area in here, uh, having just been there myself, if it qualifies for woodland, you might want to look at your woodland ordinance. This area in here, uh, having just been there myself, if it qualifies for woodland, you might want to look at your woodland ordinance because it, it, it's not. It's, it's scrub trees and stuff. And like I said, we'll, we'll provide the pictures and, and satisfy what we need to as far as a, a survey. Went, when we get to that stage, but, um, yeah, I think this area probably qualifies for woodland protection and, and candidly, we're going to. Flesh that out even more. I mean, the idea is we, we don't want any sort of visibility through that buffer. That's. The idea is that we want to shut that down as much as possible, the Mr. Glenn's point earlier. So yeah, no, that, that area probably qualifies for protection, but we're not removing any. And the area where we probably would need to remove a couple of trees, we're pretty confident it doesn't qualify for that protection. So, but you know, we have to document.
Yeah, please do. Great.
Well, in the environmental impact assessment report should help delineate a little bit more of that. Which I believe you said you didn't have any pushback. So you, you're going to do that assessment?
We will, yes.
So, once we get that.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I believe you've answered most of my questions. Let me look over my list. Anybody else have any?
No, I think if he's okay with the, with Dan's comments in the EB Walsh letter here, I think I'd be. Okay. Pretty happy to see all the reports that come through.
Seem pretty agreeable with our options and, uh. Okay. Just wait one minute, you'll get, um, I gotta remember, had, do I take the questions from the audience or do I do the, the board first? Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm just, I have someone and would you please stand up from the microphone and state your name and.
Hi, I'm Kathy Tracy. I'm with the Environmental Advisory Committee. And I was just, I'm sorry I came in late, but there's a big grassy area right behind the building. It's just grass. Got a half an acre. Wouldn't it be easier to put the parking lot there?
It's actually a store work. Uh, that's a previous system.
Oh, okay. All right. Cause I saw that.
Well, that's pretty good. Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you. You got your question answered. Okay. Okay, with that, um, anybody, I don't think we need to take a vote. You just wanted our recommendation and discussion.
That was it. And we, we appreciate your feedback and, uh, hopefully we'll back, be back before you soon with the formal plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did staff any other, any other questions before we go? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then do we have anybody from Aqua Water? Main replacement here this evening? All right. Thank you, Dan.
So, um.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good evening.
Yep.
For, uh, so Aqua, we worked, the township works pretty closely with Aqua. They come in all the time for us and. Hey, we're, by the way, we're replacing this main, doing this main. They, uh, they have another project here starting, um, this, this, um. Uh, summer here doing something by the Downingtown School District. We get these maps. And they say, hey, these are our plans. We coordinate with them about our road paving programs and so on. Um, they are, um, they are actually submitting for a grant, um, um, for, uh, um. Uh, just a bunch of water main projects. And if you read the letter, they have grant for multiple municipalities. Um, they're looking for a grant for, um, to go through and replace water mains. The ones that are affected here through Euclid includes the, um, the section on, um, North Woodford, Woodford Road. And, um, and this map basically shows, uh, that, that section, that yellow line is the, um, is the township, uh. Township line there. And so that portion, so they're looking to go for a grant, just for that portion above in purple and blue outline. Um, for main extension and as part of their grant application and they, they need just a, a consistency letter. From the planning commission saying that they've looked at this project and that it's, um, consistent with. Uh, local land use and agricultural preservation requirements. That's just part of the Penn, Penn best applications. And so they're looking for you guys to give a head nod to say, you have no objection to the project here. It's a main, it's not a new water main. It's a water main replacement. There's one there now and, uh, and, um, they're just looking to, uh, to doctorize and cross the T's for the grant application. From a staff point of view here, we have no objections to, uh, to this, um, um, uh, for, 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 to support the project here. We like the water main replacements because they make sure you guys have safe, uh, safe, safe water and not problems with water lines and. And, and so on. So, uh, so my recommendation is that you, uh, just authorize staff to, uh, to, uh, to sign a letter. Uh, on, on your guys behalf, um, um, supporting the, supporting the project here. So.
Oh, that's what the end was. Is there any issues with it or is it just a, it, it had an age and that they want to replace?
Yeah. So, so, uh, they, they, they have, uh, they do a really good job, um, with just looking at their aged equipment, aged, aged piping. And they go through and make, make replacements. Ninety-nine percent of the time they're the same size that are going in. Um, uh, and they just, uh, just, just look at it and say, hey, it's going to, if we start, maybe they've had some problems in that line. And they, they look at these and say, hey, we're, we want to go ahead and, uh, and replace, uh, replace them. So. They, they didn't come back and tell us that there was an issue with it. Uh, my get reaction is if there was an issue, they wouldn't be going after a grant. They would just be doing it. They just. Found there's an opportunity for some, for some money here and, uh, that's why they, they did this. The, I, I, I haven't seen them going after grand. We, we pay enough, all of us pay enough for the Aqua Water bills. They, they use, they have enough money to, to replace their project. So.
That's what I was going to ask. Do we know if this project will be passed along in any way from a cost perspective to township residents?
Um, so, so the, um, the. My involvement with Aqua is, is they, they don't, they have to get in order to raise your rates because they're part of the PUC. They have to go to the PUC and get approval. So every couple of years when they change their rates. They actually have to go to the PUC. There's hearings associated with that accordingly. So they have to justify, justify that. Um, the fact that they're getting grant money for it is probably a benefit rather than just doing it. Cause then they're going to raise your rates. They get grant money, it's less likely to raise your rates. Um, I, I would suspect, but I haven't had those discussions with Aqua. Um, but just from common sense point of view here, that's, that's where my thought would be.
When you say grant, is that a, a state grant, federal grant, local grant?
So Penn Vest is the Pennsylvania Infra- Infrastructure Investment Authority. Um, um, I, uh, Penn Vest does, um. Does grants and they also do, um, um, sewer projects, um, and they provide low interest loans. Um, here for this, um, I didn't look back into closely if this was going to be a low interest loan or a, um. Or an actual grant. They don't actually specify in this where they don't have to repay. Um, and, um, uh, but it's, yeah, I, I don't know the history with Penn Vest. They've been around for as long as I've been. And I've, we've heard them, them people pitch, say, if you need money, um, to, uh, for sewer projects, go to Penn Vest and they can. They can give you low interest loans for, for your projects, but I don't know enough about this one. So.
Oh, I was going to say, um, paving. Is that part of the township program of you're going to then pave behind it? Are they going to pave it?
So, so, so oddly, this one here isn't relevant to us because it's on, on North Woodford Road, which is a state highway. So we don't have any involved with that road. Pendot maintains and operates that road. So this won't affect our, us from our paving programs. Um, for instance, on this, on this map here, you'll actually see the, over on the far side here. This, um. This portion here, which is going through the high school.
Yeah.
So they're replacing that main there and they have a little section right here on woodland. And we're actually scheduled for the summer to come in and, um, and do some, uh, uh, paving improvement work on woodland. And we, we've already talked to Aqua and said, hey, when you go and do this, we want you to fix that portion of the roadway. And then we're taking care of everything to the west of it. So they always, we have a written ordinance if they, if they, um. If they do a road that's less than five years old, they have to pay, pave curb to curb. And otherwise the ordinance says they would have to, if they do half a lane, they don't have to repave half a lane over top of there. So. We kind of, if we know they, if they know we have a paving project in the future. They basically will sometimes jump in and do their main ahead of time. So they know that we're going to pave it anyway and then saves them the cost for it.
Right.
And other projects here, we've had them, we've worked with them and they've actually repaved the whole road for us and saved us money for, for projects.
Right.
Um, here for things. So, um, it's, it's one of those things that's kind of a give and take with, with them.
Yeah.
Yep. So, but this portion here is irrelevant to us because they could dig that all up and Pendot's responsible. Pendot's going to dictate to them. What they need to do for roadway restoration on that portion of the road.
Okay. So I guess what my question is, is like, is there just going to be like a two foot wide trench there for the longest time?
I don't, or. I don't think Aqua, I don't think Pendot would allow that to occur. Pendot's probably going to come back in and say, resurface the whole road.
Okay.
Um, uh, but that's something that they'll come in. So actually there's a little stub here, which I'm not sure what, I may know what that road is off the stub here going into Biddle.
Robin, is it Robin?
Maybe I, I, I get confused in those road names over, over there, Robin. So that portion would be within our township road and they would have to follow. When they do pave that, when they do do this main, they'll have to follow our, our paving's restoration requirements. Which could be half a lane or could be a full, full width overlay.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, and we'll make, they'll actually submit a permit to us at that time. We review, doesn't come to you guys or the board of supervisors. It gets reviewed in-house between our office and the public works groups. Uh, group, um, here and we make sure that they restore the road back in accordance with the ordinance requirements.
So the way it stands is as of right now, there's, we do not need to do any paving. Like there's no cost incurred with paving.
Uh, there's no cost for, this, this would be no, nothing that we would have to do would involve here. And then when they do Robin. Uh, when they do, if they do get grant funding for this and replace this main, they're going to, they take care of their roadway restorations as part of their permit. And, uh, if we happen to be paving it, they might say, well, we'll jump in to do it first and you guys are going to pave it anyway. So.
Does, is there any conflict with the construction at the high school at this time? It's not on Devon. This is not.
So this project that you're looking at now is, is not, uh, is not going to be impacting here, but the project that. That is a light purple over in here, that project here is being done. In conjunction with the school district, it goes up to the water tank area, um, which is probably up in here and then cuts through the football field actually and coming back. To the backside of, um, I forget where that is there.
Oh, yeah.
Balls, Balderson or something?
We reviewed that drawing, how they had that little. Portion, that sliver.
Woodview, right. Yeah, I think it might be Woodview. They're coming in the back of Woodview. But they're basically going to work through with the school district here, um, and do that main replacement, uh, while school's out. And before they top coat all the, all the parking lot. So they can get all the stuff done within the school district area before the school district finalized that their work.
And that pink one, that's all on the school district property?
Um, this is, um, this is one thirteen, I think is really light, hard to see. That's one thirteen right there. This is, um. Uh, woodland right here. So that portion here, they'll, they'll go across one thirteen, they'll do this portion of woodland and then they're in the school district. Property here, the football field is, is somewhere like in here and then they come out onto Woodview, they stub back out. Right before, outside the cul-de-sac on Woodview. So the cul-de-sac of Wood, Woodview is I think right here. And I believe the work will be actually not going to the paving area. So, but that will be there. Actually, I think it cuts through the football field and they're going to abandon that in the field. And then work one around the outside of the, um, outside the football field, uh, in, in the lawn area on that steep embankment area. So.
Will there be any impact to residents while this is happening as far as water?
Uh, no. So, so what they do is they typically, when any of their water main projects, what they end up with is, um. They build a new water main, um, leaving the active water main in place. And then they have a shut off, um, they turn around and, and make the connection at, once the two mains are together, are, are, are connected here. The water works, it's a pressurized system and the water flows. It's everything they, everything's looped in for the most part. And, uh, and so they get water. So I'm sure there's some stubs in here where there's not a loop. But the majority of the projects are, water's coming in from both directions. So they'll do a shut off valve and they, I, I haven't seen a situation where they've lost service. And if, if it is, it's, it's maybe they might, they, they notify the residents and say, hey, between eleven AM and twelve, twelve noon. You're going to have a, you're going to have a short disruption of your water source. Uh, and they, they coordinate all that. That's something they do internally and, uh, but they have to, they build a new main, they chlorinate the main. Um, and then they test it all and then they, uh, then they, then they made the connections. So.
Is there ever, I mean, I keep just, this is like a random question, but, um, I keep getting the Aqua PA like insurer, your pipes, right? Is there any risk to residents where you, you've got this new pressure or burst or whatever on older pipes? Um, of impact to like that? Should I start paying attention to those?
Recycle mine every time it comes in. I never, I've never, I've never done that here for, for that. Um, that's a question that's out of my realm of expertise. Uh, I, they, 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 they do a really good job monitoring systems. They have, uh, uh, um, um. Some areas are higher pressure than others, but they test all their lines, make sure they can handle the adequate pressures. Um, uh, I, I, I've seen in the past, people have pressure reducers at house. I don't, I don't believe I cur, I don't believe I have one. Um, but the, uh, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, but, but typically when they replace a water main. That's not changing their water pressure here for that. The water pressure is associated with their water tanks and their booster pumps and everything else associated with it. So.
Thank you.
When they chlorinate the new main, they then have water standing in that main before they connect it onto the live grid. Is that true?
They chlorinate the main and then they, they, um. So I, I don't know, they, they chlorinate it, they flush it all out. Well, I always have a problem when they do the chlorination process here because it's a dry weather day. And they have a de-chlorination, they're chlorinating the line and they take these large buckets. And they actually do de-chlorination tablet, tablet, tablets in there. And they basically flush all that through and then it drains down into our storm sewer systems. Into the, it gets into the creeks or basins or wherever. So I always struggle with that. I've had discussions with them in the past about it. And, um, they do go through and they're, they're regulated here and they want to, they, they don't, they're not taking chlorinated water and discharging into. Our storm water, uh, uh, systems here. They do have chlor, de-chlorination process. I always in back of mind here, how well is that really working? But, um, I'm here for that, but I've never gone out there and tested the stuff as it runs down into our storm sewer pipes. With our, with my little chlorination, uh, 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 methods here, the, the, the paper, uh, to, to check that, but. Um, they do have a safety officer and people out there monitoring that and everything else. So.
But you don't know when they open the valves from the existing mains to feed the new main. Whether or not it's already full of water when they do that.
He said they take it out.
Yeah, they, they.
Or do they replace it with clean water as part of that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, 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 I've been out for, I mean, whatever, um, whatever, twenty-nine years doing this and they've done, and I've, they're probably fifteen different water main projects. Making sure, because we go out and inspect it to make sure the road's being backfilled properly and they're not making a mess of things. So we, we are out inspecting them here within the township. But I haven't necessarily paid that much attention to how they operate that water line. That's not.
Just curious.
Responsibility here for, for, for representing from the township. So I, I don't know the answer to that.
Just curious, because if it is full of water and they open up that valve. As long as there's not much air in the middle of it, you're not going to get a significant water hammer that's going to blow up people's valves and. In, impact their piping and stuff, but if it's empty. And they open the valve too fast, you're going to get a significant water hammer that'll blow pipes.
Yeah, and, and they do this for a living. They replace mains all the time. So, so I, I would, yeah, I think it makes sense of what you're saying here. I, I haven't necessarily. Um, uh, been involved with that to see how they bleed that air out. I'm sure there's ways they, they do that before they, uh, before that all happens. So.
Will the township notify residents that this is going to happen? Is that like a?
Uh, Aqua is very good with their notifications.
Going to do that.
Aqua sends letters out in advance. So anybody who's impacted here by this, this project that's going to be happening this summer. Um, or, um, get letters from Aqua. They have a whole public works people. They notify us, but we, we've never had to go out and notify residents of these water main projects. Um, um, here because Aqua sends letters out to all the affected property owners and they've done a really good job. Out of all the utilities that we deal with, with Pico and, and for gas and electric and everybody else, Aqua is by far. Our favorite to work with from, uh, uh, administration point of view here. They take care of things. If there's a problem with it. They, uh, they, they basically, um, fix it right away. So, um, they, they are good with their notifications and, and that process. So.
They give us notification of when they're actually starting to work, make sure it gives them a hand.
Just like FY for community awareness.
Yeah, they, they're in business and, uh, if they cause trouble, it just leads more headaches for the, mistakes happen, but. I think, uh, I hope everybody is in agreement that we'll give them the approval they need to go ahead because. Improving the main is, is a plus for everybody in our community. Says, everybody in agreement?
Says, everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion or it's just a head nod, right? Just as?
You're, you're trying to get me, aren't you?
Okay. With that, announcements? For, for four eight, Board of Supervisors, seven PM, four seventeen zoning hearing board, seven PM. With that, I will open the floor up to any other discussion or comments from the public or the board. With nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In a second. Uh, I have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you.